The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation undergone, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let me have a little call Mr. Kennedy.
Certainly, Mr. Atkinson.
Here.
Mr. Blessington.
Here.
Ms. Dean. Absent Ms. Daniel, or sorry, Ms. Deweese.
Here.
Ms. Kayes.
Here.
Mr. Kloss.
Here.
Ms. Vendrick.
Here.
Ms. Warren.
Here.
Good point.
First item up is the approval of the agenda. Be it resolved that the Oxford Area Board of School Directors hereby approves the October 7th, 2025 special meeting agenda as presented. Do I have a motion?
Question.
Certainly.
Any discussion? For favor.
Aye.
I oppose. Recognition of persons who request to be placed on the agenda. Ronnie Lutz.
Oh, I didn't know that. Excuse me, Ronnie. I'd like to get back to that motion. I'm sorry, I didn't realize that I had to speak up then. We're forever holding my peace. Ronnie, just give me a minute, please.
Of course.
I have a late entry into the game today for our position we need to fill by Mark Patterson's resignation on the 16th. And I have a candidate that gave me a letter of intent today, and everybody probably has it at their table, at their seat. I know that the date was the 29th to get it in by. He did not know anything about it. I posted it on Facebook the other day, and he saw it and he asked me, like, what do you got to do? I mean, you just got to give us a letter of intent and be a resident of the area. He's been here for 25 years. Things I would be interested in. This guy's a pretty decent human being. He's one of my clients with Medicare. I hate to say how old he is, but he's my age or more. And he's got a lot of experience. So we poured in a letter today. I'm looking to get an exception to have him interviewed today, even though it is entered at 29th. Because I read the 91-1-0 policy. It doesn't say anything in there that you've got seven days to get your application in with your intent letter. So I'd like to bring him in, because we only have one other candidate. And, you know, this guy's got four years' experience working for HUD, which he helped with a lot of the buildings, and he would be a great asset when we're doing our capital campaign. And unfortunately, he might also be a great asset when it comes to doing our finances. He's got that kind of experience in him. So that's what I'd like to see, if we could at least interview him tonight.
Is the policy on that situation going to go into the agenda?
You can go back and go back to that motion and redo that motion. If there's a motion on the floor to add something to the agenda. We don't have a motion on the floor yet, do we?
I would like to make a motion, put it on the floor, to add an agenda item to the agenda. Or to go back to that motion, sorry. It's just to go back, correct?
Get the actual motion. You don't have to go through that stuff.
Why don't we just do the actual motion?
Just to go back to the actual motion.
We're going to go back.
Thank you.
What is the actual motion that we're going to go back?
It was, well, we have the approval of the agenda.
Correct. What is, how do you want, how does, the motion would be how to amend the agenda.
So where you have call for nominations, we would like to appoint Ray Dougherty as one of the candidates.
Okay. There's going to be a motion.
That's my motion.
Sure.
A motion.
We have a motion.
Motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes. Becoming a Pennsylvania school director is a serious commitment and a responsibility. Our focus needs to be on our students, our schools, and our community. News of Mr. Patterson's resignation was announced publicly at the September regular meeting. Everyone learned of his resignation at that time. As in the past, the superintendent set the requirements and timeline.
Are we giving Mrs. Vendrick the attention that she has the floor?
I'll wait. Becoming a Pennsylvania school director is a serious commitment and responsibility. Our focus needs to be on our students, our schools, and our community. News of Mr. Patterson's resignation was announced publicly at the September regular meeting. Everyone learned of his resignation at that time. As in the past, the superintendent set the requirements and timeline dates for any qualified person to apply to fill this vacancy. These requirements and timeline dates were advertised to the public. As a responsible governing body of the Oxford Area School District, I believe we need to adhere to the process and timeline that has been laid out for filling this vacancy. I want to thank Mr. Dougherty for his desire to serve on the board. However, I believe that he has not met the requirements for being considered for our current vacancy.
Just a couple of comments on your directive there. I agree, becoming a Pennsylvania school director is a serious commitment. You had suggested that everyone learned of the resignation at the September meeting, although it was just stated clearly by Mr. Blessington in his conversation with Ray Dougherty that he was not aware and did not learn of the resignation at the time. So I feel like that is a false statement. In addition, the superintendent did set the timing for advertising, not for the policy which reads that the vacancy should be filled within 30 days in accordance with the Pennsylvania School Code of 1949. So in that statement, I believe that we are adhering to the process by allowing this potential interviewee to interview this evening, because it will still fulfill the requirement of Section 13 of the Pennsylvania School Code, I'm sorry, 315 of the Pennsylvania School Code, which will allow us to fill the vacancy within 30 days. There is no detailed description within the bylaws of the board around the timing of advertising. And if we have applicants that are interested even this evening, that are sitting in the audience, we should allow them to be considered for the position.
Everyone was made aware, when I say everyone, it was made public to whoever was listening, whoever was present, whoever paid attention to school board meetings. It was made public, and that knew, that was the first time it was made public, so.
I just want to be clear that you're saying they were everyone. But it's very clear that that person who was, who saw this post on Facebook, whoever they saw it, was not aware.
Well, perhaps not that evening, but the, I have seen numerous social media posts by some of our politically connected board members. You know, people were spreading the word, and it was made public. Not to mention that the procedure that Dr. Woods set up and the timeline followed precedent. This has happened before.
Agreed.
We have, we have had vacancies. We have followed the same procedure to fill those vacancies. And I know at least one time where it was just one candidate that offered their application.
And that's okay, but we have two.
So that has happened.
So we have two that have offered their application.
And we have one that has followed procedures outlined by our precedent procedure that was set by the superintendent.
But not by our policy. Just to be clear, it is not set by our policy about advertising for that position. So they did respond to the advertisement, and that's wonderful. But we also have someone who also responded, but not to that advertisement.
We have, so if we look at policy, it is very broad, but we also have precedent of how things were handled in past times. We also, we need to follow, follow the precedent that is set out.
We need to follow the law. We need to follow the law.
We are following the law.
Pennsylvania statute Title 24 P.S. Education 3315, filling of vacancies. In either, in case any vacancy shall occur in a board of school directors by reason of death, resignation, removal from the district, or otherwise such vacancy shall in a school district of the first class be filled for the unexpired term by the Court of Common Pleas of the county in which such school district is situated from the qualified electors of the district. And in a school district of the second, third, or fourth classes, the remaining members of the Board of School Directors shall by a majority vote thereof fill such vacancy from the qualified electors, from the qualified electors, not from those that responded to an advertisement, shall fill such vacancy from the qualified electors of the district within 30 days thereafter. Thank you.
Excuse me, I would like to make a statement about the fact.
You will have a moment to make a statement.
Not before you make a vote on whether or not you're going to accept this gentleman. And the statement is that.
You're not part of the board, ma'am, you're not part of the board.
The statement is that she is misrepresenting. She is misrepresenting information, because that was not posted on the website until, until the 22nd, not the 16th, and neither was the video. So please at least be honest. No, it's just whoever happened to be here knew.
Or followed.
Then don't say everybody, because that's not the inclusion of everybody.
Now. That is, you have been warned, you have been warned twice. One more time, okay? Do it for me, clear.
Very.
Let the board do the business of the board.
Do it honestly, is all.
Do we have other comments or concerns?
I have some concern about bypassing this. I do see it as bypassing our policy, because our policy, as Mrs. Vendrick said, has precedent. Our policy is also what gives our superintendent governing guidelines, which he followed in the way that he executed that policy. That we would consider bypassing this, and we didn't consider bypassing or coming around with some way to keep our libraries open for six weeks while we implemented the new library policy, which that had direct effect on our students. It's just bothersome to me. I'm not finished. I'll start speaking on the microphone. Also, I went back and did a little timeline digging for everyone on Facebook, because this is how people are learning information. So on 9/16, Mrs. Lutz, is when, I'm sorry, Mark Patterson resigned. On 9/17, Mrs. Lutz made a post prior to even our district getting one out. I believe she shared it to over 19 different local postings. On 9/19, we also posted it, and it was shared that we had a deadline of September 29th. On 9/19, Mr. Blessington made a post, which was shared over 14 times, one of which our applicant at some point did interact with. I can't tell you on which date, because the way, when you just like something, it doesn't give a date. If you comment, you can see the date of when the person commented. They interacted with it at some point, a post that was made on 9/19. On 9/22, there was another post made by Mrs. Lutz that had 12 shares. So these shares are going out all over to every message board there is on Facebook. People were aware this was going on. And then again, two days ago, Mr. Blessington made his post, and that is when I found the applicant again to actually interact and comment with him a day ago, and we got the letter today. So I'm just sharing that social media timeline as sharing of information, that it has been widely spread through our community.
So once again, I just want to go back to, you're saying everyone learned of this through posts. Again, just to go back to the comment that was made this evening, that this particular person was not aware of this, that doesn't qualify under the, everyone learned of the resignation at that time, which was the most stating. So, and again, I wouldn't want to penalize someone for not being on social media and not allowing us to interview for this position. I think that's not appropriate.
I have, I'm actually actively applying to go back to work after several years of staying here with my children. And if I miss a deadline for applications, and that company pulls the position off the website because they've received the sufficient applications that they deemed necessary, I can't go to them and be like, oh, but wait, what about mine? They're not going to consider it. That's not how this works in applying for positions. And this is a job, it's a position.
Actually, we have a law that dictates that this needs to be filled, this vacancy, within 30 days, and does not indicate the advertising requirements with Pennsylvania state statutes. I still think legally, all should be given the opportunity to interview, even if this evening they were interested from the people that are here attending.
I'm thankful that we have a law too that states we have to fill the position within 30 days. We're currently at day 22 right now. We did advertise the position. We did have one applicant need that position. My concern is not on the qualifications of the person who just submitted their application or the letter of interest today. My concern is the person who followed the rules, who met that deadline. I feel like in some ways we're penalizing that person now by extending it. And if we are extending it and opening this up to additional people today, then there are people who might have thought about applying for this position, and if they found out we allowed a late applicant, then they'd say, well, if I would have known you would have allowed a late applicant, maybe I would have put my name in too. So now we open this up, and then we, I kicked around the idea, I got the emailed notice of this applicant after 3:00 p.m., so that was four hours ago. You know, kicked around the idea, like, what happens if we extend it another week? But now we, there's a real danger that we're not going to meet that 30-day deadline if we extend it to other people now to open it up after we allow one other person to do it tonight. So that's my concern. It's a major concern, because now I feel like, again, we've set precedent. We're not following our own rules.
So we did advertise, and I actually believe again, that opening this up and allowing people to interview for the position is one thing. Everyone on the board has a vote, they don't have to vote them in. But we would allow anyone in the district who's interested in this position to run. Up until the 30-day or until we vote on this.
Right. I hear you, and I understand what my concern is too, that there are people who think this deadline is coming past, and they think, okay, I didn't put my name in, I didn't know anybody else was putting their name in, now I found out we just allowed somebody else to put their name in the hat today, I didn't know anything about this, you're going to wake up tomorrow and say, what? You allowed it to open up to other people? How come I didn't know about this? You know, it doesn't seem right to other people, too.
I think we just need to follow the law. That's the appetite of the board. Mr. Pat, Mr. Atkins, you have here. Are there any other questions, concerns?
Yeah, my concern with this, and I get to follow the law, and it was advertised, but, I mean, it was advertised on the 22nd, and seven days later, you had to get your application in. It was advertised in a newspaper, which nobody reads anymore, and it was advertised in our website, which I can tell you, most of our constituents don't look at that either. I put it out on Facebook, and I, you know, got it out there, and the guy contacted me. He's an excellent candidate, I think we should at least hear what he has to say and interview him. Otherwise, we could go through all this, and we could equally just say, you know what? You know, what if we just don't like this one applicant? What do we do then? Are we bound to, do we have to accept one applicant and one applicant only? Or could we have an interview and say, eh, you know, she's really nice, very great, but I don't know if she's the best person for this job? So we still have another week to interview people, and then we could start this whole interview thing all over again. So, I mean, that's what I'm getting at with this. We can make an exception. There's exceptions made all the time in all businesses. And businesses, a lot of times, will put an advertisement out there to hire an employee, and they might, you know, my problem with the nine-day, the seven-days, was it seems seven days is arbitrary. Should have been given at least two weeks. We're only, the guy resigns on the 16th, we get the letter, and you stuff out there on the 22nd, and on the 29th, don't anybody talk to us anymore, we're done. When the position doesn't have to be, and it says shall, be filled by the 16th of October. And that was another question I had. So is it the 30 days from the time he resigns, or the 30 days from the time we advertise that we need somebody? So this guy comes in here today, it's, I don't think it's that big of a stretch to interview him. And if he's not a great candidate, then we, at least, we're done. We interviewed two people, we took it. I don't think this exception would be extraordinary in any way, way, shape, or form. I think that we should be able to interview more than one person. And, you know, I know it says shall, but shall doesn't mean have to. It may mean, it may in some people's mind, but it is, as far as I'm concerned, as far as our school should, and, you know, if we don't get it done, what's the big deal? What happens next? And we've got one board member that's not here, which kind of screws things up, because now it's an uneven vote. I mean, the vast that I've seen, it seems like, everybody seems to get lockstep with whatever is tomorrow wants to get done. And I, I think it's unfair. I think it's unfair to put a time limit of seven days to get to your letter of intent in, when the position doesn't have to be filled for 30 days. I think you should have right up till they finally hire somebody. And most jobs, you know, I've been in and out of business for a long time. Most jobs, all of a sudden, a guy walks through the door, like, where did this guy come from? Oh, yeah, I know, we stopped taking applications yesterday, but this guy's pretty good. So you know what? We're going to hire this guy. Holy cow, did we almost scoot the pooch on that one. You know, it happens all the time in business. Been around it, seen it. So I think that we should make an exception, let the guy be heard, interview him. You got a chair up there? Just put a second chair up there. Interview him. We, you know, the last few times we've interviewed people, I didn't say anything. But I feel seven days is too short of a window to get that letter of intent.
I'd just like to correct that from September 19th to September 29th is 10 days.
And, Mr. Blessington, we are not a business. We are grant.
Well, you brought up the business part, that's the only reason I brought it up. Exceptions are made all the time.
You know, we're part of the government. We, we have to do things in a legal way, and we, following precedent is part of that legal way. And I just want to mention that the candidate that did submit her letter of intent and resume within the allotted time, put a lot of thought into this. And it's very, very detailed and gives us a lot of information. So it is very possible to do this within seven days. We are a governing body, we need to follow regulations.
So I believe that we, again, just to clearly state it, we are still following regulations by meeting the law of having nominations and calling a vote within 30 days to appoint a new board member. My motion that was on the floor was that we would amend the agenda to appoint another candidate, Ray Dougherty, as a nominee for interviewing this evening. The other thing that we could do, if that is not approved, is we could motion to table this vote till next week, allowing whatever candidates to, Mr. point, the opportunity to apply and still meet the requirement of filling this position within 30 days according to state law. So I would be okay with that as well.
Just more, can we change there for a point to maybe add?
Sure. Thank you.
And I just want to say, I'm not really, really that concerned with the forensics or chronological observations on everything everyone's saying. This gentleman shows interest, and I appreciate him, and he shows interest in the position. Got it in before tonight's meeting, as he helped communicate it to the board. Therefore, I think we should just move forward with the vote and accept this. And I think the other thing I'm learning from this is probably just tightening up the policy a little bit as well.
Anyone else?
Just want to say again, my concern is by allowing a person to submit their application in today without allowing other people to, who didn't know that they could do that, I just don't think it's right, so.
Okay, so I have a question for Dr. Woods. Well, actually, first I have a statement. So it says that we're going to accept all qualified candidates. And I'm just going to, and again, this maybe speaks to Mr. Atkinson's point that we need to tighten up the policy. Qualified applicants are, what qualifies them is that they have followed the procedure, and they have gotten the application in what is requested. And in this case, what was requested was a letter of intent and a resume. We had a letter of intent from Mr. Dougherty, we do not have a resume. What was requested was a time period by the end of day, by 4 o'clock on the 29th. We have an applicant who made that effort, got it in on the 29th. We have someone who has given us part of what is needed in a very sketchy way at the five hours. And I got it almost right away, five hours before the meeting. Some people didn't get it right away, I'm not going to. So when I read the word qualified, that's one of the things that I take to be a qualification. There are others, there are legal qualifications as well, but that to me speaks to what makes for someone qualified. But again, maybe that means we need to tighten up the policy. What I do know is that when applicants are submitted, there is a verification process that goes through to make sure they are qualified. Are they of the right age? Do they reside in the residence that they state they reside in? How long have they resided in that residence? Are they in the correct area? This time it doesn't really matter, because Mr. Patterson was at large, but sometimes we have different regions. So I would like to ask Dr. Woods to speak to what happens to make sure that someone is qualified, and did that happen for Mr. Dougherty's application?
Yeah, we verified residency today. We do that through the tax rolls.
Yeah, I'm not done. The other thing that I have is, I spoke to the solicitor. Always get to speak to solicitor, it's been a while. I talked with him this afternoon, and he said, we have a policy which establishes a process. We followed that process. The policy is not firm, because each instance will be different. Each time someone resigns or leaves the board, it will be different. Sometimes there will be time, more time, like when Mrs. Bell left, I think, or Miss Bell left, I think she gave us several weeks before she actually was done. Mr. Patterson walked out right before a meeting started. He gave us absolutely no warning. So that will be different, that will start our process thinking different. Anyway, we followed the process that was a Anyway, we followed the process that was established. There is no statute that says we can't disregard our policy or process. But he cautioned us to think about why we would want to disregard our policy and process.
Excuse me just more, are you, you're adding commentary to this? Can you read verbatim what he wrote to you? So, I'm getting this on what?
He, I'm sorry, we talked on the phone.
Oh, okay.
Because it was, again, I got this five hours before, before the, before the, so, this, this is pretty much verbatim, these were the notes that I took when he, yeah. So, there's no statute, in a nutshell, there's no statute that says we cannot. He cautioned us to think about why we would want to disregard our policy and process that we have put into place and that there is, there is precedent. And I was going to read the policy, but the policy's pretty much been read. I was going to read that, that is up there, and Mrs. Kayes read most of it. I would like clarification, just because it's confusing and I wasn't going to read, I was only going to read the highlighted part because we are not a Class 1 school district, so we are in class, one of the other ones?
Two, three, four.
Two, three, four. We are in another class of, of, and I didn't know if Mr. Blessington wanted answers to any of his questions. You asked some questions, like, when does the 30-day clock start and that type of thing? I don't know. Truly care to know the answers to those questions or you were just speaking?
Yeah, I'd like answers to all of them. And again-
So, to the 30-day clock, that started the moment Mr. Patterson-
Why is it, why do we only have from the 22nd to the 29th to get our, our, our letter of intent in? If we got 30 days, we still got plenty of room to move.
So, so, again, Mrs. Lutz was out there letting people know, add a time. I, I was gonna-
It's not her job.
I was gonna ask, of course it's not her job. I was gonna ask you if you thought that this gentleman was very qualified, did you let him know about this position early on?
No, I didn't think he'd be interested.
No.
He contacted me. He said, "Hey, what do you gotta do to get on this thing?"
Okay, but I'm just-
Bring you the letter.
We all, as a board, as a board, we all-
I don't see what the big deal is. Why can't you just do it? It's not that big of a deal.
Uh, Dr. Woods would do like a way in on this.
Dr. Woods, earlier, my conversation was, hey, never know, that's up to you guys to work and go on.
It is up to-
We can say, yeah, without killing anybody. I'll paraphrase it.
Yeah, appreciate that. But, the best question, look, I, I can't ever recommend to the board that you deviate from your own procedures. These procedures have been our past practice when we had board vacancies. We have an applicant that has come in after the deadline, so, I'm here, all of you, you're asking for my recommendation, I can't give you that recommendation. But, to your point, Mr. Blessington, and we have a motion on the floor, that will be up to the board. And I think that paraphrases what the solicitor says as well. Be cautious of, of when you deviate from your procedures.
And before we take the vote, and I know you said it was not a conflict, but just because we had said he was a, he was a, a client, just to make sure that there's no conflict of interest in terms of abstaining from the vote or whether you should not abstain from the vote.
I mean, I helped the guy fight with Medicare eight years ago. I'm semi-retired from my position on what they call emeritus. I did not make any money from this guy. I did not seek him out. He contacted me. And then when he told me about, you know, I mean, I talked to the guy eight years ago and he told me, "Yeah, I used to work for HUD." I'm like, son of a gun.
Mr. Atkinson, there's, there's no conflict.
Okay, so, thanks.
Thank you. I appreciate you straightening that. Still did bring it up, but I, I gotta know.
I just want to make sure, if they knew what was, yeah, I don't see, sounds good.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make another comment now that, or, Mrs. Warren's finished. Sorry. We can't disregard our policy and process, is what was stated. I just want to be clear again, I did not read the policy, but I will because I think that's probably a good idea. The policy states 9110, bylaws of the board, board vacancies, new director selection. In accordance with section-
I believe we have this to be posted as well.
In accordance with Section 315 of the Pennsylvania Public School Code of 1949 amended, any vacancy which should occur as a result of the death, resignation, or removal of a school director shall be filled within 30 days. The following procedures shall be followed in filling such a vacancy. So, it's very clear what the procedures are. The procedures are, A, the vacant seat will be advertised. There is nothing stated in here about timing or timing of acceptance. B, all qualified candidates will be interviewed by the full board in a public meeting. And C, the vacancy shall be filled by a majority vote of those directors remaining. I just want to be very clear that we are not violating our policy by allowing another candidate to interview this evening. Thank you. And my motion still stands.
Except for the word qualified, that Mrs. Warren was talking about.
Yeah, so I did, I did write that as well. So, qualified comes from the Pennsylvania state law, again, and we can read that if you can bring that up as well. I don't know who's directing that. But, it talks about qualified electors. So, and you're right, qualified electors would be the people who live in the district who are qualified to run for this position. It doesn't say, again, anything about being qualified by responding to an advertisement. Thank you.
Correct, but what is in our policy is not electors, it's qualified candidates. So, what makes them a qualified candidate? They have to, they have to meet all the legal requirements to be a qualified elector, but we have a status, we have a definition of what makes them a qualified candidate. And, and to Mr. Atkinson's point, that does need to be tightened up.
Yes, thank you.
Because prior to this moment, when people were up in arms about this, qualified candidate meant that they met every stipulation of the law and that we set out for them as the board. And we set out that the deadline-
Where, where is that written?
I'm telling you, that's how I interpret it.
Oh, it's an interpretation. I just want it to be clear, thank you.
Right, and that is how it is, and that is how it is made.
So, it is not written, and I just want to make it clear, we're following what is written by the law and the policy.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So, there is precedent, though. And this is the fourth one that I've been a part of, and this is how it's always been done.
Okay.
In the four times that I've been, I can't speak to prior to that.
And that's-
All right, so now we have a motion that's on the floor and I-
Your worst point, what, you, those are getting called up in the semantics of qualified. There's still an interview process. If you feel the candidate wasn't prepared, and that continues through the interview process, then you make their vote accordingly. I just ask right now, when you vote, don't vote as if you were voting yes or no on this candidate, whether or not they're in the position. You have a lot of votes, you can do that. Don't start making decisions based off of, of ambiguity and, and what opinions are on a loose policy. It's all heads.
I, I just have to say, and the process, that's what we're voting on, is what's happening here, what's-
I'm not voting on the process, I'm voting on adding some, a late candidate who got in for the interview.
And we need to keep in mind, as a governing body, what-
That's not what I'm voting, I was gonna say- I'm not voting on that. I'm voting on what the motion is. So, I just don't, it's all I-
Okay. I have tightened up the motion, it is not to your election. Let me know when I'm going to read it as I think. Be it resolved that the Oxford Area School District Board of School Directors hereby approves allowing Ray Dougherty to be interviewed at tonight's special meeting to fill the vacant board seat. We have a motion for that, is that correct?
Yes.
And we have a second.
Yes.
Mr. Kinnon, can I have a little talk right on this basis?
Certainly. Mr. Atkinson?
No.
Mr. Blessington?
Yes.
Mr. Dean absent. Mr. Deweze?
None.
Ms. Kayes?
Yes.
Mr. Claus?
Yes.
Ms. Vender?
No.
Ms. Warren?
None.
Well, she does not care.
And I would like to make another motion, and that would be to table the vote till 10/14, allowing for additional applicants to provide them time to send in their letters of intent or their resumes and to table this interview process and vote till next week's meeting, which would still be within the 30 days, on 10/14, since we were notified of the resignation on 9/16. That would still give us two days following the vote, still implemented, although I guess it would be implemented that evening, so. That, that's a motion on the table.
I'll second it.
We have a motion on the table and a second.
Do we need a certain amount of people to be here next Tuesday for that vote, to have that vote happen? Or is it just who's ever showing up that day?
I believe we have a quorum every meeting, is that correct? We have that quorum at each meeting.
If we are extending that window of time, what advertising requirements are there to doing that? And do we have the time to do that?
Typically, it takes three days, I believe, to get it into the paper. We also would have to advertise the meeting.
I'm just gonna try and speak some realism to all you here, because I'm leaving here in a month. You're playing a game here, you're, you're all gonna get someone on the board that you don't want because the court's gonna appoint them. I don't know why we're so caught up in not just letting someone else interview. You're making this into something much bigger than it is. There wasn't even something in writing, in your conversation with the solicitor. There wasn't even a strong warning, anything that we could do. Like, I understand what you mean, but that's your opinion on it, could be other people. Frankly, if other people came forward and late, then fine, I would allow them as well. But this gentleman did it and here we are. But, just be careful what, what's gonna happen, just letting them out. You're both, everyone is trying to vote for other sides, you're both gonna come out losing on this one.
So, my concern with putting it off until next week, and, so we have, so we, so we put it off until, till the 14th, which was initially discussed, initially when we were setting out the process for people to apply, we could hold the vote on the 14th. But if we get to a point on the 14th where we have eight people here, it's four to four, we can't make a decision, nobody gets, nobody gets voted onto the board, then we are in the position that Mr. Claus alluded to, where we do not have time at that point, we do not have time to even advertise for another meeting to be held, for new candidates to be gotten. And so therefore, it, it does have the potential to move out of this board's hands and go to the Court of Common Pleas for them to report some, appoint somebody to the court. And I don't know how you guys feel, to the, excuse me, to the board. I don't know how you guys feel, but, but this is our community and I do believe that the people in our community should have a say over who gets to be on the board. So, that is why initially, the timeline, those days were, were moved back to have this special meeting, so that if something happened at this special meeting where there couldn't be a decision that was made, we had wiggle room. Pushing it off to next week allows us wiggle room.
So, I'm requesting that wiggle room, that's, that was my motion, is that we use that wiggle room that you allocated by having kissed to the evening.
All right, the problem I have is, we've got four Democrats who voted against this thing and three Republicans that say, "Let's look at it," and one that didn't show up. And this happens all the time. And one of the questions is not to be partisan, to be nonpartisan. Well, this is 100% a partisan vote. Every time there's any question about anything, I always get the same four people that vehement agree on what should be done. And in the meantime, the other ones, the Republicans, pick her back and forth a little bit and say, and bring some common sense to this question, like Mr. Claus is right now. It's like, well, you know what? You know, would it really hurt to interview the guy? That's a pretty common sense response to this. It really wouldn't hurt. We did the same thing with the FID, when we didn't want that FID, and Bill made a great point, like, I don't know, that's a slippery slope. The next thing you know, all right, well, you'll have five of these floating instructional days in, and before you know it, we, we got half the school year being done that way. It's a slippery slope. The kids wanted to have a snow day, they should be able to act like kids and go out sledding. I'm just saying, it always seems to go down to partisan vote. And this is, one of the questions in here is to keep this nonpartisan. I say, if we interview this guy, then we can at least show a little semblance of nonpartisan. Because it's always the same four that always vote the same exact way and never seem to have any discussion. So, I got a problem with that. So, I say, table it. If we're not gonna let the guy interview, I vote to table it. Again, you can vote four, three against me, but I think a little common sense, and I think Mr. Claus raised up a great point of common sense here. And so, what are we gonna do, we're gonna fight enough that we're gonna let the courts decide who takes that job?
You're right, I'm not planning on letting it get to the courts. But what are we telling the person who did?
Who cares? I mean, you guys really have no, you don't care about any of these-
What are you telling the person who applied? Who cares? That they got, they did, they followed the requirements?
They applied, good.
They applied, they met the requirements?
And we got another one.
But who cares?
Well, we got another one. We've got another, I, I don't like the fact that it's a single person applying. And I don't like the fact that it seems to be falling on a partisan line and a partisan debate. We can make exceptions all the time. It's not that big of a deal. We're not breaking laws here. You know, the guy showed up today, contacted me this morning, and I got the letter of intent in here.
I would prefer to have more than one candidate too, but the thing is, we only had one candidate that applied, that applied and met the deadline.
And I can't help but understand that your opinion hinges on the same as the other three. You're not being independent here.
I'd like to think I am.
I don't think you are.
I am, I am.
Yeah, I think, again, we're talking about whether or not an applicant responded to a, an advertisement which is not written down anywhere. There's no, we, we read through both the policy that we follow and the legal statutes, 315 of the Pennsylvania Public School Code. So, we're, we're not going against any law, and nothing is written down about the advertisement. So, and as Jennifer Warren explained, it was initially discussed when they set out to potentially even hold this meeting tonight on the 14th. So, that tells you that there is some wiggle room, as she said, in the policy, in the procedure, I'm sorry, not the policy, in the procedure. So, I think we should allow the other candidates, if there are any, to apply, table the motion tonight, I'm sorry, motion to table the vote tonight until next week to allow for whatever candidates want to apply. Maybe we'll have a great outpouring of candidates after tonight's meeting and we'll get six or eight or 10 of them to, to look at next week. That would be amazing, right? I think that would probably serve the district better that we have, you know, we, we're able to pick the best of who is available in this district for this position. So, I still would like, and I think there's a second on the motion, the motion was to table the vote tonight and the interview process till 10/14, allowing other applicants to apply for this position, still allowing us to meet the state statute of filling this position within 30 days of the resignation or notification of resignation.
Any other comments?
Ms. Deez, I appreciate what you're doing, and I'm with you, but I, I can't let it go that short. There's so many things that could happen with that timeline, that this thing could go right to the-
I was just trying to find another possibility, taking into account Mr. Atkinson's comment. It was a good comment. So, I was just trying to find another avenue, if we don't move forward with allowing this applicant to interview this evening. If we don't move forward with allowing this applicant to interview this evening, then open it back up. We still have the 30 days. We can make a decision next week on one of the who-knows-how-many candidates we'll have and move forward from there.
So my question is then, Bill, what are your options here? I do feel like you're voice of reason.
I tried to be a voice of reason. It's not happening. We made this into a complete hootenanny, so I tried. I was, I don't know if I can. I was going to put another motion back on, my own motion to try and add this gentleman in to be interviewed. I don't know if I can, because that's a very similar motion.
So you can. You have a motion on the floor right now, which needs to be acted on unless the person that requested the motion can retract that.
I can retract my motion to allow you to do your motion. And then if it doesn't go through, I will put it back on. Thank you. So I will retract it.
Thank you. I'm adding a motion to add Ms. Choma. I apologize for not-- but add Mr. Choma back on. Add Mr. Druckey back on to the, add Mr. Druckey to the agenda to be interviewed.
Any more discussion on that? Mr. Green?
That motion by Mr. Kloss, seconded by Ms. Warren.
I have to say no, I'm sorry.
Ms. Dean, absent. Mr. Blessington?
Yes.
Ms. Kayes?
Yes.
Ms. Vendrick?
No.
Mr. Kloss?
Yes.
Mr. Atkinson?
I know.
Ms. Warren?
Yes.
Oh, she cares.
All right. Here we are. I believe we are at public comment.
Can I just ask for my note taking where, what line item this became?
I don't know yet.
Okay.
You'll know when I redo this tomorrow.
Thank you. I was just--
Okay.
Good evening. Oh, okay. Sorry. Good evening, Ronnie Lutz, Easton, Hampshire. Some of the things that I was going to bring up, which part of it was reading the policy and who, how it was that Jennifer Warren and David Woods were, became the arbitrators and authority over the interpretation of the policy, which is incredibly vague. One thing in the policy, in listening to Mrs. Kayes read it, though I've read it many times, is number C in the policy says, "The vacancies shall be filled by a majority vote of those directors remaining." Well, that is not the situation this evening because Mrs. Dean didn't show up, which seems to be a pattern when there's a divisive vote on the, from the board. So that's one thing. The other thing is, which has been gone over nauseam, is that there is no, there is no timeline on the advertising. But outside of that, there is absolutely not one line in this policy about the application process. Yet you are all standing here on process, but there's nothing about process. The other thing that I noted that was quite interesting is, Ms. Vendrick kept saying precedent. And I was like, huh, I wonder how many times that happened. And then, isn't it unusual that Mrs. Warren says it happened four times while she's been on the board in her eight years? I find that very interesting. I'd also, and the other thing is, is about the delay. It was delayed. I did post on the 17th, and what I posted was that there was a vacancy, Mark resigned, and that there would be applications and the announcement available on the website, which never happened. And I can guarantee that I watched that website multiple times a day, every day, and the 22nd was the first time that it showed up because I posted it that day. So just to clarify timelines here. The other thing that, the other thing that I would like to say, the last thing I would like to say about the policy, this policy was adopted in 1998. It's been re-adopted multiple times, but the last time that this policy was revised was in 2004, 21 years ago. How is it that this policy was left so loose and vague? This policy is beyond inadequate. This whole meeting has just been unbelievable. But what it has clarified is the inability of David Woods, intentional or not, to fulfill one of a superintendent's most critical responsibilities, and that is leading policy and keeping policy current, board members informed, and the policies clear and updated. Moving on, I wanted to comment on the candidate that you have brought forth, because you brought this person forth. And on September 6th, this candidate, Kristin Stevens, posted, "I know exactly where my grace for wait and see has reached its end. Any hope I had in GOP is long gone. Any patience I had for anyone who supports it, what this president is doing is over. I'm done, I'm disgusted and worried, but above all, I'm heartbroken. And on behalf of this country I love, I'm very, very angry." On November 6th of 2020, she posted, "When democracy wins, it will be again on the backs and legwork and determination of black women. White folks, let's rise up and refuse to sit down in our complicit comforts and pretense of safety. Our liberation is bound together. We have felt this unsafe for four years. This isn't a new feeling for most black, indigenous, people of color. We owe it to our younger generations to become better ancestors." This person is 100%--
Time's up.
--DEI, and has no, would have no intention, as some of these board members, to uphold the executive order on indoctrination--
Your time is up, and you've already been warned. Please sit down. Peter Thompson.
Hello, everybody. First time here. Peter Thompson, Easton, Hampshire. I actually have a daughter in the school. It's just a little nervous, I apologize. So I took time to write this letter today, just kind of voice my concerns and some feelings I have, and who I think we should look at. Hello. Thank you for taking time to speak with me today. I wanted to share my support and ask that you consider Christina Stephens for the board. I've read her last writing, and most of her most recent posts, writing resonate with me. Personally, I believe politics should stay out of our schools and our classrooms so our educators can focus on providing a strong, inclusive, and learning environment for all of our children. Christina's comments that I read reflected the same relief. I especially appreciate when she said, "If teachers could accomplish that, they would focus on math and reading." That sentiment reflects a clear understanding of real priorities in education. I also value her emphasis on the critical role parents play in reinforcing education at home. As she put it, "No matter how much education is taught at school, at schools, if it's not imported at home, not reinforced at home, aided at home, that child will struggle." She also stated, "Make sure your child has a sense of self, security, and love is thought first and best at home." Those words should capture every parent, is what we should strive for. As a parent of a young daughter, my wife and I take this to heart. We actively support our daughter's education, whether through a tutor, exposing her to STEM projects, family trips to NASA, our most recent trip to the Battleship, New Jersey, at-home building computers, launching kit rockets, building robots, even introducing her to cryptocurrency trade, which is what I like to do, too. When I hear someone like Christina speak about empowering teachers and reinforcing learning at home, I feel she knows and understands what that truly means. Let's move our foot forward and make it the educational envy of Pennsylvania. Let's elect Christina Stephens to the board. To borrow a quote from a galaxy far, far away, I believe she could bring a balance to the force. Crazy humor in here. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
Good evening. I stand here as someone who was willing to serve on this board, driven by a concern for our students' education in Oxford, and a belief that diverse voices strengthen our schools. I plan to reapply and interview, but after deep reflection, I chose not to apply. Tonight, I'll explain why, hoping to spark honest dialogue without creating a board where all perspectives are truly welcome. I first considered applying again because I saw another chance to tackle real challenges in OASD, budget issues, curriculum debates, and student success. But as I watch this board in action, a troubling pattern emerged, a clear preference for advancing a specific progressive ideology over open collaboration. This board has sidelined a significant portion of our Oxford community, conservative parents, students, teachers, and taxpayers, who hold traditional views on family, fiscal discipline, or academic standards. Their voices are marginalized, making them feel they don't belong. When topics like DEI, SEL, or CRT are brought up, alternate perspectives are dismissed, ensuring only one ideological viewpoint thrives. This isn't unity, it's exclusion dressed up as progress, where conformity trumps community input. Let me speak directly to SEL, which this board has pushed despite evidence of its limited effectiveness. Sold as tools for student well-being, these programs have drained taxpayer resources with minimal academic gains funneling funds to emotions, over-reading in math, often embedding progressive values on identity and equity. Reviews from RAND and What Works Clearinghouse show SEL barely improves test scores or behavior. Our kids get trauma-informed activities laced with ideology while core skills lag. It's time to redirect those dollars to proven neutral teaching methods. This exclusionary dynamic shows most clearly at this table, where the board's commitment to its ideology fosters visible contempt toward dissent. Conservative board members face eye rolls, sighs, or looks disgust when they propose common sense ideas. I've seen it in our meetings and during public comment, where conservative speakers are barely tolerated. These signals tell our community, conform or stay out. Many qualified individuals won't apply, deterred by this hostile atmosphere, all to protect a narrow echo chamber. The impact goes beyond this room, as the board's gatekeeping extends to reputational attacks that silence opposition. I was lied about by someone in this room and her friend, and online, so I know firsthand. Applicants face targeting from board allies online, with words twisted to defend their failing ideology. I've seen qualified people grilled, not on merits, but on whether their beliefs align with the board's leanings, their character dragged through the comment sections. It's divisive and it works. Good people walk away, leaving OASD without diverse input. And let's not ignore DEI and CRT. These cornerstones of the board's ideologies have sparked legal scrutiny and backlash right here in Pennsylvania. Pushed as unquestioned truth, they risk violating educational neutrality, leading to complaints under state civil rights laws and federal investigations, as in recent VA school cases. They divide our classrooms by prioritizing indoctrination over balanced learning. Our schools must teach critical thinking, not compelled ideology that excludes half the community. To this board, I urge, reflect on this pattern of ideological favoritism. Welcome conservative perspectives as equals, not threats. Debate ideas without disdain. Make this place for all our Oxford community, not just a select few. Our kids deserve better, a board focused on education, not exclusion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Johnson Boyd. I'm an Oxford Borough resident, lifetime. Spent those best words several years ago for seven years. I'd like to start off by telling Mr. Kloss, thank you for being the voice of reason. Not the first time, and you will be missed going in in the future. Education is no place for politics. And why? Why you would ignore the voice of the people by replacing a Republican with a Democrat once again? Once again? Transparency is important. This was done when Ms. Bell resigned and the board ignored the voice of the people. Policy does state 30 days from the announcement. Applications were not released according to school code timeline. You once again have predetermined who the Democrats want to replace a Republican board member. Politics do not belong in education. Also, attempting to silence sitting board members is unacceptable. The superintendent does act at the discretion of the board and does not rule the board. Mrs. Lutz and Mr. Blessington use a public format like your cronies with Oxford Concerned Parents, or whatever that ridiculous organization is. Mr. Atkinson, your concern is that your predetermined candidate could possibly not make it. So 30 days has not yet been met. And an additional statement that Mrs. Vendrick made, half foolish of a statement to say that a school district is not a business. Man, quite in fact, it is a business, and you're dealing constantly with the constituents or the taxpayers' money. And you're to do that and do it in a responsible business manner. What a ridiculous statement to make. I again give you accolades for postponing this, giving the gentleman an opportunity. I'm quite confident, don't know the man, but I'm sure he would be a qualified candidate, and he certainly deserves the consideration of the board. And incidentally, it is very ironic, very interesting, that every time there is a critical vote to possibly take place, that we happen to have an empty chair, giving the Democrats the majority vote, as we experienced here tonight. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Boyd?
Morning, Kevin. I'm-- Excuse me. Sorry. Members of the board, I strongly encourage you to stick with the policies and the precedent that have been set prior to, in the four different resignments that you said that have occurred. I think that the policy sets, policy and precedent have to be combined together and considered. Otherwise, this becomes a free-for-all. While Mr. Blessington, member of the board over here, says that this is a nonpartisan issue, and shouts and bangs his chest about how nonpartisan this is, he has posted on Facebook within the last 12 hours, "Democrats are anti-American." He's posted that "Democrats are evil." "Division comes entirely from the left." "Democrats have shut down the government because they hate Trump." And "Democrats incite violence." So when you sit here and you are a member--
Something I said there is wrong? Is anything wrong there?
Is any of that not true? Charlie Kirk is dead today?
It is wrong. And I have the right--
Mrs. Kavanaugh.
I have the right to put forth to the public and to everyone in this room what the loudest shout of nonpartisanship has posted publicly on his own Facebook page. It is clear to me that the divide between Democrat and Republican is going to be very hard to overcome here. And what is boss in this entire discussion and this entire evening is the kids. I have a senior in high school that goes to this school, that she's gotten exemplary education, and that I see you guys struggling with the challenges every day that all of our students face. The ones in school, the ones in charter school, the ones getting bused here to provide the right facilities, and you are making the calls as best you can. Yeah, policies can be updated. We could have a whole policy subcommittee that does that all the time. And some of our subcommittees have no problem holding libraries closed so that children can access books, because they can't seem to come to the conclusion that if you don't want a child to read a book, don't let them check it out of the library. But why would you extend that to every other child within the school, creating more work for our teachers and for our librarians? So when we cry here about partisanship, I guarantee you, if it was the other way around, and the board was slanted 4 to 3, and Republicans, there'd be no additional hearing, there'd be no grace for anybody else. And so I say, just do what has been done before in the past, according to policy, combined with precedent. Otherwise, if you don't, I'm positive that this will come out all over Facebook, again, thanks to those that serve on the board and those in this room that consider themselves digital creators and will not paint anyone in the good light. So try to just stay above the fray, keep doing the work that you're doing, keep doing what you're doing, make decisions in the best interest of our kids. I support most of you 100%, and not those that call for violence. Thanks.
Okay, we are now at the point of the agenda where we will begin the school board candidate interviews. Before we do that, I would like to just kind of go over the process, what has come before and how this will be handled. So as acting president of the board, I received a list of questions from our solicitor that are just for this purpose of selecting a vacancy, filling a vacancy on the board. Board members were also asked solicit questions if they wanted. I asked to have those questions in by Sunday, September 28th, so that they could be gotten to the solicitor, reviewed by the superintendent, to determine if there were any problems with the questions, or they were worded in a way that was appropriate. I did receive some questions. They were reviewed, and they have been incorporated, most of them, into the questions that we have here this evening. So I am going to ask the questions. The president of the board usually asks the questions. As acting president, I will ask questions. I'm going to make a decision to have the candidate who had everything in on time will go first, and then we will bring up Mr. Dougherty. Board members may ask any follow-up questions to the questions, the answers that the candidates give. We will be asking the same set of questions of all candidates. So at this time, I could have Mrs. Stefan or Stevens?
Stevens.
Mrs. Stevens come to the--
Can I ask a question? So I know in the past, there's been concern about the two candidates being in the room when I've been speaking. I don't know if that's something that we want to consider.
Are you concerned?
I mean, I just know that it came up before. I don't know if the board is okay with all the candidates being in the room, hearing the questions.
We can't ask anyone to leave a public--
I say the president, we didn't do it, we did it this way. Actually, we alternated. Okay. We did, we alternated, but we have, we have in the past, well, the first time was just one candidate, and that person just answered. The second time, there were two candidates, one went first, one went second. There was a suggestion at that point that the person who went second got favorable treatment because they could hear the questions. And so we alternated with Kristen Bell. Caitlin Bell. But I decided to go. I mean, if the board feels differently, I'm happy to go without the board feels. This is not my show.
No, I'm good. The last time it was, you know, you beat the one person and the second person. But we've done it before, it's precedent.
Well, the very last time, we did it differently. So, all right.
We did it before.
Okay. On behalf of the board, I would like to thank you for submitting your letter of intent and your resume. Thank you for taking an interest in being part of this board. My first question for you is why you're interested in serving on our board?
So as I--
Is it mom?
Yeah.
As I stated in my letter, I live in this community. I've lived here for 20 years, and I intend to continue living here. And so the school district is part of a positive community. It's part of a succeeding community.
We can't hear.
Can't hear.
Just pull it a little closer, it is on.
Is this better? So I'm just stating that as a community member, I've been here a while, I intend to stay here. A successful community is a place I'd like to be, like to be somewhere where people want to be, where people want to have their children in the district. Education's always been a part of my life that's been important. Growing up as a child with a family of educators, married to a school principal, homeschooled and have my kids in the Oxford District, it's just part of the community in which I live, so I'm interested.
Other any follow-up questions? The second question is, what do you believe is the primary role of a school board member? And how would you ensure your decisions are guided by the best interests of all students?
So what I've learned coming to meetings is that it is very important for, obviously, the laws to be followed, but for policy to be written. And so that is essentially the major thing, is it writing a policy and doing so in a manner that follows the state and district guidelines.
What do you see as the greatest challenges facing public education today? And how about more specifically for Oxford?
I think that Oxford is facing what we're seeing across the country everywhere, which is divisiveness. I see it as something that is holding up. Policy for children, when people are putting politics into an equation where it isn't required, everyone is entitled to have their own political opinions. But I think that I have seen, in the time that I have been coming to board meetings, where that politics is interfering in a way that is hindering what is best for the kids in the community, and that is of concern to me, as well as, I think, a continuing and growing problem.
Other any follow-up questions? School boards are intended to be nonpartisan. How would you work to maintain a nonpartisan collaborative approach when making decisions on curriculum, policy, or student support services?
As a board member, my focus would be on what is in the best interest of the kids according to the laws that we have in this state, in the district. I am going to state, because I've been hearing whispers back here, sitting, listening, when it comes to partisan. I am not actually a Democrat, contrary to popular belief. You can check my records, I have never, ever been a registered Democrat. So I was a registered Republican until very recently, and I'm now undeclared. I have an ability to see more than one side of a situation. I know how to ask questions. I know how to listen. And since my belief is that politics doesn't have a place on the school board, despite Pennsylvania not requiring you to run as something or another, I find that inappropriate, so I don't believe that would actually be a problem for me.
Okay. Are there any follow-up questions? What qualities, skills, and experience would you bring to the board?
So as I stated, I am actually good at listening, and I do ask good questions. And again, I have an ability to see things from multiple angles. I have critical thinking skills, courtesy of my sociologist father. And I have always had an interest in children. I used to go on a daycare, I worked at a summer camp, I've recently been on the board of The Point, which is a youth program in Parksburg, if you don't know what that is. And so I just have time, experience, an interest in education, you know, general knowledge gained living in this world, living in this town for 20 years and seeing how it is and having my own children be successful through the Oxford School District. So it's just that kind of experience. I have not been on a school board before, so I do not have that experience to bring.
Other any follow-up questions? And this is the final question. Is there anything else you want us to know about you that has not been covered in your materials or tonight's interview? Sure.
Do you like Phillies? Oh, I thought you were done, I'm sorry. Wait, you had-- Mine was just a silly question, anyway. I just want to make sure your own downplay control, that's all. No disrespect, in person.
Other question, I'll restate the question. Is there anything else you want us to know about you that has not been covered in your materials or tonight's interview?
I think that I have pretty much stated who I am and where I stand. It was in the letter, I've pretty much reiterated all of that. So I think what you see is what you're going to get, and that's it. To Mr. Blessington, you're going to have to be a little more specific as to what a hometown girl needs.
I'm a Phillies fan, Eagles fan, four teams, Phillies, Sixers. Just please don't tell me you're Dallas fan. Please, just do that. Because there is somebody in here that is Dallas fan, and I ever looked that way.
Not that it has any bearing on--
It hasn't, it does.
--to be on a school board, but I don't follow sports.
You don't follow sports? You won't?
Can I ask a question? I assume to the other candidate that if you could remember my question--
Yep.
If you get elected to the board, what would you do? Or what are some of your kind of your thinkings of how you would immerse yourself to kind of learn, not only kind of functioning the board, but the district, what some of the current opportunities are and so forth? How would you immerse yourself?
So my understanding is that there are trainings that are available to elected board members, and hoping those are also available to me, to learn the ropes. Other than that, I guess being quiet and listening, learning the ropes as I go.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time, Mr. Stevens. Mr. Claus, just what I have is, if elected to the board tonight, how would you immerse yourself or learn to function, learn the functions of a board? I would like to just recess for a couple minutes so people could take a rest and break. When we come back, we'll have Mr.--
I'd like to press that.
So we are back to order. So I'd like to call Ray. Is it Dougherty or Dougherty?
Dougherty.
Dougherty, yeah.
Dougherty's the rich--
Okay. My neighborhood, we have Dougherty Drive.
Is this one?
I believe so, yeah.
So just like Stevens, I want to--
Stevens.
Stevens, thank you, I'm sorry. I wanted to make sure that I thanked you for your interest in being on the board and for putting in your application. I also would like to, since we did have a resume from Mrs. Stevens, I'd like to, just if you had anything for us, but we have what you submitted.
We're years older. I've been retired for about 40 years.
Okay. So I'll start with the first question that I asked her, which is, why are you interested in serving on our board?
Well, I had grandkids go through Oxford School District. I do have two great-grandkids attending now. So I just would like to get more involved with the community, and that's why I applied for the board position. I wish I would have found out sooner, I would have had anything completed.
Are there any follow-up questions? So I actually do have a follow-up question. So then is my understanding that your interest in serving on the board is a recent one, just a few days?
Yes.
Just a few days old? Second question is, what do you believe is the primary role of a school board member? And how would you ensure your decisions are guided by the best interests of all students?
I think part of the school board is to govern the school district, and you have budgets to take care of, you have contracts to take care of, and I'm sure everybody here oversees that. And that's where I think the role of the school board is.
Okay. Any follow-up questions?
Well, since we don't have a resume, could you just give us a brief synopsis of what you've been doing for 40 years and what your job qualities are, please?
Well, I worked for Delaware County Housing Authority for 40 years as a procurement purchasing manager. I took care of all their inventory, vehicles, I took care of their contracts. Contracts would be anything from landscaping to building remodeling, roofing. I did that for 40 years. I was also, to give you a little background, I was involved with the scout troops as a troop committee chairman when my son was a lot younger, he's in his 40s now. And also, I'm in the classic corps, so I was involved with the corps club, and I was their secretary for six years. So I do have some background. Also, with the housing authority, I was chairman of the state committee. So I just think I can bring a lot of my background to the board.
Okay, thank you. Any other follow-up question? What do you see as the greatest challenges facing public education today? And how about more specifically for the Oxford School District?
I just feel our kids have to get back to the basics with English, math, history. It seems like they're steering away from a lot of the basic learning things that we used to be taught in school. And I think that would probably broaden our kids to learn the things that we had back in school, or what I had. I'm older than everybody here, so--
Any follow-up question? The next question is, school boards are intended to be nonpartisan. The next question is, school boards are intended to be nonpartisan. How would you work to maintain a nonpartisan collaborative approach when making decisions on curriculum, policy, or student support services?
Well, I agree that the school board should be nonpartisan. It should stay like that. I don't feel you should bring politics into the board group. I've always thought that way. And I vote my conscience, not my Republican and Democrat.
Are there any follow-up questions? The next question is, what qualities, skills, and experience would you bring to the board?
Well, just some that we talked about on my resume, is I have a contract background, a contract writing background. I've always seen some big projects. I'm sure our schools need some updating, and I think I could bring the background to the board just to oversee some of these projects, or help oversee some of the projects.
Are there any follow-up questions? Is there anything else you want us to know about you that has not been covered in the materials you provided or tonight's interview?
No, I think we've got everything covered. I just want to say, I'd like to thank the board for taking the time to hear me. I'm sorry I got a late start on this, but thanks for hearing my case.
Any follow-up? There's one last question. If elected to the board, how would you learn the functions of the board? How would you learn the roles of a board member?
I would hope that the board would follow up with a lot of the past agendas. I did read through some of that the last couple days to see what was on the agenda and what was in the meeting minutes. So that's how I would proceed with the Lord of War.
Other any follow-up questions from the board? At this time, I would like to call for nominations from the applicant pool for new members, for the new member of the Oxford Area Board of School Directors.
Nominate, so I nominate Christina Stevens.
And I will nominate Ray Dougherty.
I would like to accept the motion for the nominations to close.
Motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I, at this time, would like to call for a vote regarding the nomination, nominated members of the Oxford Area Board of School Directors. Mr. Cooney, I'm assuming you're going to handle this?
Can I have a minute to self-copit here?
Yeah, we have discussion.
Yeah, we can have discussion. Go ahead.
Self-copit.
Self-copit. Go ahead. Okay, so we will be running votes on both nominees. Whether the first one passes or not, we'll run for the second. Votes are independent for each nominee. In other words, how you vote for one does not affect how you vote for the second one. Yeah? Okay, thank you. All right. Mr. Cooney?
Yeah, I'm on that.
Yeah, but I'm on that.
Sorry.
You might be done.
Sheets are just a little over, so... Okay.
Another feeling.
Nominee Kristen Stevens. I'm sorry, Christina Stevens. I wrote her initials instead. All right, so Ms. Vendrick?
Yes.
Ms. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mr. Blessington?
No.
Ms. Dean absent. Ms. Deweze?
Yes.
Ms. Kays?
No.
Mr. Claus?
Yes.
So you have 1, 2, 3, 5, 2.
Okay. Do we have a call for the next one? Ray Dougherty?
Nominee Ray Dougherty. Christina, Mr. Blessington?
Yes.
Ms. Kays?
Yes.
Ms. Vendrick?
No.
Mr. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Atkinson?
No.
Ms. Warren?
No.
Ms. Deweze? 4-3.
Did I forget?
Yes.
You did.
I did, me too, but that's okay. Still, I did not mean to do that. It's okay.
It's a vote essentially.
It's by the...
It's voting to vote again.
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Okay, I... By rote.
We'll hold the vote again. I'm sorry, Mrs....
Has the vote passed? I was only thinking the one...
You have to keep going.
Okay. That was my mistake. I just, I honestly, I meant to say no, and I said yes, but we can vote again.
5-2, 4-3.
It's not, the vote was...
Yeah, I'm tired. I just said the wrong thing.
You will call again. Mr. Cooney, the vote candidates, please.
Christina Stevens, nominee. Mr. Blessington?
Yeah, well, it's a voting on. We're voting on Dougherty or...
No, I'm so correct. Christina Stevens.
Miss Kays?
No.
Ms. Vendrick?
Yes.
Mr. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Atkinson?
Yes.
Ms. Warren?
Yes.
Ms. Deweze?
Yes.
Ms. Dean, that. She has, once again, 5-2. Now, nominee Ray Dougherty. Ms. Kays?
Yes.
Ms. Vendrick?
No.
Mr. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Atkinson?
Yes.
Ms. Warren?
Yes.
Ms. Deweze?
Yes.
Ms. Dean, that. She has, once again, 5-2. Now, nominee Ray Dougherty. Ms. Kays?
Yes.
Ms. Vendrick?
No.
Mr. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Atkinson?
No.
Ms. Warren?
No.
Ms. Deweze?
No.
Blessington?
Yes.
4-3. Most of them does not care. Nominee Christina Stevens, 5-2.
The resolved that the Oxford Area Board of School Directors hereby appoints Christina Stevens as member of the Oxford Area Board of School Directors effective October 7. Okay, any discussion?
I mean, I think we're not voting on this, you're just announcing it. That was just the vote to put it through. Now you're actually appointing that. You're appointing the one, the one that came through. Rossick.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
No.
Okay, so at this point, Judge Massey had to leave. He's been gone for quite some time.
So Judge Massey had to leave, and the oath of office is with Judge Massey. He is requesting that you make an appointment between 10:00 and 12:00 tomorrow. If you can do that, if not, to call the office and make an appointment for some other time where he will swear you in. He apologizes that you had to leave me. And you know where the magistrate, magisterial...
Yes.
Very good.
So my question was, does anybody from the board need to be there to witness and know the judge has? Okay, closing items. Correspondence, Mr. Cooney?
We don't have any.
Okay. The calendar. Tuesday, October... All of these are here in the administration building unless otherwise noted. Tuesday, October 14th, Policy Committee meeting at 6:00 p.m. Tuesday, October 14th, Athletic and Student Activities Committee meeting, 6:30. Tuesday, October 14th, Facilities and Safety Committee meeting, 6:45. Tuesday, October 14th, Work Session, 7:00 p.m. Tuesday, October 21st, Education Committee meeting at 6:30 p.m. Tuesday, October 21st, Regular Meeting at 7:00 p.m. Tuesday, November 11th, Policy Committee meeting at 6:00 p.m. Tuesday, November 11th, Work Session at 7:00 p.m. Tuesday, November 18th, Education Committee meeting at 6:30 p.m. Tuesday, November 18th, Regular Meeting at 7:00 p.m. And on Tuesday, November... Sorry, Tuesday, December 9th, we will have the reorganization meeting at 7:00 p.m. Announcement of executive session, we have had none. Follow-up to questions? Any concerns, Mr. Cooney?
We don't have any.
We don't have any. Can I have a motion for this meeting to be adjourned?